I would need a motion to accept the warrants and payroll time sheets, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
I would need a motion to approve the transfer of the police revenue and the annual funds for the police fund, please.
I move to transfer the money. Second.
Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
I need a motion with approval of the police fund monthly operation fund transfer.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the interest transfer, please.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
All right, Susan's on her way on the summit, so we'll go on. Committee reports, Chief. Police Department had one hundred and six calls for service and made up seventy fours, one arrest issue, one citation, and three warrants. Anything, Chief? Bill? Yeah, I was gonna get to the rest of it, come back to it.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Billy, anything?
No.
Uh, streets? Lights?
Nothing.
Uh, finance?
Not anything.
Good.
No, no.
Sanitation, Mary Jane?
No. I've had some complaints, I've been gonna get some letters out, but I need to get the pictures taken of those, so.
All righty.
I'll be working on that, and I've been going to do it for three weeks, and I haven't got it, but yeah. But I'll get it.
All right, thank you. Planning, I don't think we have, but we did have a planning meeting on the garage over next door here that was approved, so. Anything else? PPA, Jeff, meaning?
I wanna ask one more question on building. Do you hear any more about the building more? About school? No. About the. Hookup our building to the generators.
I got a thing here, and we'll see to it.
Okay.
Okay, back to safety, safety committee, do you have anything for council tonight?
Ralph?
Go ahead.
Do you represent us? Okay, we know that for a long time, we wanted to do our least a raise, and we haven't been able to do that for over seven years, make a substantial raise. So I met with Ralph, I met with Kathy, and we would like to give the police department two dollar raise across the board. And I would also like to throw out there on the table that from now on, that'll be the start of at least at ten dollar range.
Ten?
That's ten, ten, okay. Since that's what the government's calling it anyway, I'm probably forced to do it anyhow.
Now, on the two dollar across the board, that would be a dollar and sixty-seven cents for the chief. We want this raise that he already got previously, totally two dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
And the other would be, your presentation is two dollars for dollars, is that correct?
Yes, yes. I think that would bring him up with that range that's fitting.
And are we, at this point, we're gonna redo the classifications, correct?
We need to look at those and redo the classifications also. But I think we ought to wait until everybody go through all classifications.
Exactly.
And get them to, and then we can vote on it all at one time. Have you ever seen the classification, though?
No.
I showed it to you, and I showed it to Ralph. You need to see it, okay?
Is this just like a police department or everybody?
It's everybody, every day. Because I think it's something that we need to go through and do and be able to set up, starting with, and then you.
Yes.
You chart it, what you can go by and where you're at, so it's pretty well covered.
And it is my understanding that this motion is a one-time bulk, and the future raises would be based on review from the chief, correct?
Absolutely.
If that is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief and officers, for being patient with the village. I know you guys, you promised your promise, your promiseship, and it's time to deliver, and hopefully this helps out. And we appreciate all that you have done in the past and the future for the village and the parish, thank you very much.
Yeah, I owe the police department apology, because I'm the one that, that was upset. I didn't win any raises until after the levy issue and in May last week. And then I voted to give Jana a raise.
And I take full responsibility of that, I wasn't gonna bring that up, it was in front of me, my mind was seeing it, I went with it, I have apologized to the officers, that was my mistake, so I do apologize. It was in front of me, my mind went to it without thinking. Whatever the longer it is, was gone.
These raises are effective as of?
Effective as next paper, as easy as you write, which is May fourteenth.
Yes, okay.
Do we need to make that an emotion to go on with it?
I would say, yeah.
I'm moved that the raises are act, take effect on day fourteen, which is the next paper.
Second. Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Okay, onto some ordinances. First off, we need to. Would like to rescind, because there's some problems with the ordinance two thousand fourteen oh two, I would like to have that.
I move that we rescind that ordinance.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
All right. We have a resolution here, Jana met with the auditor, there were some changes that she had to do to make the auditor happy. So we have a resolution two thousand fourteen national eight, Village of New Parish request for amendment two thousand fourteen certification of estimated resources. I believe this is something that she had to satisfy the auditor, or the auditor with, I would need a motion to make these changes, please.
I move that we make the changes. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Also, need a motion to pass this as her seat for good, the three reading rule, because all she needs to do is back the auditor. Motion, please. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is resolution two thousand fourteen dash oh seven. This regards, this resolution to establish health insurance coverage for the employees of the Village of New Parish, Crevel County, Ohio. Whereas the Village of New Parish shall offer to, to provide health insurance coverage for all village employees and dependents, be it their fourth. Resolved that the health insurance coverage shall be extended to all employees of the municipality, working a regular schedule of at least twenty-five hours per week in their eligible dependence as required by law. And being further resolved that the cost of said coverage shall be shared by the municipality and those employees electing coverage. And being further resolved that each employee shall pay fifteen percent of this total premium, including. Including premium cost of covered dependents, which will be paid as a pre-tax deduction each pay period. Any vision coverage elected by the employee will be paid, or complete, will be paid for completely by the employee. It will be pre-taxed earning and will be deducted each pay period along with a percentage of shared premium. This resolution shall become and be full force retroactive to April first, two thousand fourteen. At the inception of the annual health insurance coverage for the Village of New Parish. I would need a motion to accept this resolution two thousand fourteen oh seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
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 I, yes, I love that we declare emergency and wait for your. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, we'll stop, Susan, how are you?
I have one, I have one over here, resolution, yes, I hear.
It's oh six on the agenda, but it's really oh seven.
No, we need to rescind oh six.
We're gonna get to that another soon, so.
Okay.
Hi, Susan, come on out, more joyers.
We didn't have to stop here, we.
Uh, that's fine, you may, you may have somewhere else you.
No, I don't, I was already there. I kind of did flip-flop one in this evening, it was my off one day, or not off, but not a normal one, whatever. Anyway, good evening. Um, congratulations on the passage of your letter. Yay! I'm not sure that was a big relief to all of you, so that was wonderful, I saw that. Couple things I have to do this evening, I have the final change order for the Washington Street project, which was eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, which is approximately a hundred and ninety-three dollars less than what I thought it was gonna be the last month. Which was less of six thousand dollars, which ended up going away. The hundred and ninety-three dollars was basically a reimbursement that will need to go back to the water and sewer fund, or actually the water fund. Based on the water meter problem that Pergrine had there on Wayne Street, and basically what we can do is just deduct about a hundred and ninety-three dollars from the contract. And you'll see that Jeff Garlock gave me an invoice for the exposure. So that's it for you. So I need you to accept change order number two for the eighteen thousand dollars, and that included the extra milling and all that extra work that was related to the final project, so. And that was in line with all the funding.
And the motion to accept change order number two, please?
I move that we accept change order number two.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
With the passage of that, it basically finals out Pergrine's contract, so I have a pay request, a final pay request, and a pay request to release the retainage. The final, the pay request for the final part of the work is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents, and that's pay request number two, which is.
Hey, I make a motion to approve twenty-one thousand, two twenty-nine, forty-one, twenty-one thousand, two forty-nine, forty-four?
Yep.
Which is payroll number two. So move.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Um, application number three releases the retainage, which is twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, which is basically retaining this money that we held all the while. Just in case we get to the end, and we need them to, like, finish a punch-able item that they haven't done. I will tell you that I got a phone call from Neil about some sidewalk issues on Main Street. One is there at Buckney's Garage, and the other is at the corner of, uh, Main Street. Um, Keith was down here last week, he looked at Buckney's Garage, and that is a salt problem that, but we put salt in there. And what happened was it laid on there, and then the concrete froze, and then it followed, and it burned, and it followed, and it's basically not really a pergrine issue, it's a.
Their problem.
And Keith did talk to Chris, and he explained that to Chris, and then once they got, well, what does that do inside, you know, it gets salt inside, like if it's heated. Inside your shop is heated, so you don't have the free salt thing going when it goes on the spot. So I do have pictures of it, it is a salt situation. Down at the corner of High and Main, that's not a salt situation, that is defective concrete from the water that got on it. So we were talking to Pergrine, and they'll have to come back and repair that, and that would be a warranty item, so the contract's really done, and it's not really a, a final punch-able item.
Now, do they have to go in and take that all out? Report?
They'll have to give us some options about how they wanna propose to fix it. I mean, there's a certain amount of, where we could go and try to do a sand, kind of like sand also, to the top, and then we have to put, like, a new finish back on it, which would probably be more expensive than if they just cut it out.
Probably wouldn't believe it.
No.
So would that be the case, that would be a warranty item, maybe you have, maybe having a warranty on the work, so that would be done through the work. So that's the final.
So saying that, Susan means that we can go ahead and release the retainage?
Yeah, you don't release the retainage, but they're still bound to a one-year warranty, and I have a hold of it, it's scheduled completion, so a one-year warranty. It hasn't, hasn't started, I'll probably backdate it, but they'll, you'll still have a one-year warranty till probably this fall, for this coming fall. So I mean, there's still plenty of time on that warranty if something else would arise. With that also, you have eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-sixty dollars and ninety-three cents left in your project, which I know you were doing the sidewalks down there, and that was, I think, around six thousand.
Ninety-seven, ninety-six.
Okay. All right, so it'd still be about two hundred and seventy-seven cents.
And this is the retainage?
Yes, it is.
I would need a motion to release the retainage from the, basically, Washington Street project, so move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Um, the other thing I guess I just wanted to bring to your attention is the state capital improvement program, or we call it SCIF, also known as Issue Two, also known as OPDC. That ballot, that issue was all about, like, last week as well, and passed, which means there'll be another ten years of the program, because it renews for ten years at a time. Those applications will be due at the end of July, first of August. The parish doesn't have anything in the pipeline, so just, you know, begin to think about that, because you'll probably only have two more meetings before that application, if it's funded. And obviously, we need to probably put some numbers together to analyze those some projects if we want to do something with that.
Can we put that on there before they lost more attention on forty-seven?
Anything new in expansion, you can ask, you can ask for fifty percent of the cost, they won't pay any more than fifty percent. We did meet and talk about the utility extension, I would be back on Friday to discuss that further with you.
What?
That is why.
I'm glad you said that.
Um, to, to kind of look at that a little further, and look at some funding options and something like that, and sort of even further decide where that's gonna go. So anyway, and that obviously is an option for the option. And after that, then maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting, because obviously, we already have the numbers for that.
Right.
We decide not to go that route for whatever reason, then.
And the next extension we've been talking about, Cherry Street wanting East, correct?
Yes. The only thing that's a little different is, half of the works commissioned has kind of changed their position on the A T T thing, and the fact that they want, they don't want to get A T T, they want the A T T actually on that street. So I'm hoping we can still use that intersection of A T T and one twenty-one, and maybe see how that, how that will mesh with their rules. Getting a little pickier and pickier all of a sudden, so. Just keep that in mind, and, you know, we can look at that. The new rules, or the new guidelines, this year's program are just coming out, so hopefully by Friday, we have those in place. Because I have a gentleman that sits on my integrating committee, who's been supporting those, it's gonna be me in creation, so I can get it before other people. Whatever!
You don't wanna say that over there.
That was a mistake, wasn't it? Yeah, I didn't say a thing. Um, anyways, that's kind of what that's been, so. Any other questions?
Love me, nobody else? Susan, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thanks for putting me in, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks for all you do for this village.
That's all right, I'm glad I have the opportunity.
And do feel free to leave if you'd like, Susan, I use your day off.
I'll send you off in a few minutes. Thank you.
Susan. Need a motion to rescind the resolution two thousand fourteen oh six?
Move that, that resolution we rescinded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, the next is. Next will be a resolution to, for council to accept for Mr. McMahon with the school. Ron said we need to do this as a resolution. Once city council chooses to accept this, then I will call this McMahon and get this done. Is there, anyone has a discussion before we move on to this resolution?
Explain what's going on first.
Well, basically, Mr. McMahon wants to give this going back to the village, and. That's, it's, he's either gonna give it to the village, or he's gonna give it to a church out of Dayton, he give us first choice. And I personally don't see a negative here, I see more positive than negatives. You know, last year we had the, there was money to tear down, but we didn't climb because we didn't own it.
There's some others.
So once we own it, we can start looking for, and we have Susan also already looking for money to do something with. I think there's still possibilities of part of that up there in the gym and elementary, I think there's some possibilities of utilizing that up there, I think the majority of it needs to go. But I'm not so sure that some of that really could be used for various things. Nationally, we could put our park up there, which I've talked with Commissioner Westler about, he felt pretty assuredly that he could help us, somewhere around thirty-four thousand dollars in two thousand fifteen. I hope he still can, seeing how the election didn't play out, uh, the way it did. But he still has the contacts, and so we're always fighting Mr. McMahon on the mowing and everything else, I don't see it ever getting any better, it's only gonna get worse.
I just don't think unless, I don't want it to be completely out of our hands by somebody in Dayton, I don't think that's gonna put us in any better position than we are in now.
I don't think not.
Plus, I think, even though I don't think we're gonna be able to just go up there and just.
Well, no.
Bank gangbusters, you know, I do think.
You know, if we put our park up there, and if we get some, you know, if we can get some, uh.
Help from other organizations.
Well, not only that, just some donated time, and some donated resources, you know, we go and put a nice shelter up in, in a weekend, if we can get some guys up there to do it, I mean, I don't think there's anything out of the realm of possibilities here. That's what can be done, there, there's some equipment out there now, I've looked at it, it looks like it's still safe. He's painted it everything, the sweet sections and stuff, and then we have some stuff out here, we'd be back in charge of the basketball court, towards National Apple Fest, and be assured that they have a place to have their apple fest. I'm not so sure that there's not some savings there, I don't know, it needs to be looked into, you know, they pay D P N L a pretty good little price to hook into that transformer box on the street, I don't know, the school has plenty of power coming into it, I don't know what, it could tap into that power. I mean, there's a lot of options there, I think, to be explored, you know, once we, if we so choose to set, then we just have to, you know, commit it together and look at the possibilities, what can be done up there, I mean. If that, if the elementary place was, and I don't know if it would be, sellable, I mean, that would be awfully good place for the ladder. Maybe even a meeting room for the chamber, I mean, there's a lot of classroom though there that could be utilized, I think, for the good, and it was sitting there deteriorating. We're already having a little of those at times, so.
Well, it's obvious that nothing's gonna be done with it, and if we had to go in and try to take it for taxes or whatever, it's gonna take ten years.
There's, I had the, the attorney run a title search on it, there's no means on it, there is twenty, I don't have that paper in front of me, about twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars in means assessments against it, which is from the village, or the mowing and stuff.
Those are all brought, that twenty-six hundred is probably back taxes, is what I was told, because when Jane was still here, McMahon owed like six thousand dollars in fines, and, and from not mowing his grass and cleaning it up. And I had all of those dropped, except for five hundred dollars, that we, we paid out of our pocket to get it cleaned up one time, and. And there's a letter in, Jane had a letter somewhere, because we had to send it to the auditor, and all those fines were dropped. So the village has not gotten any charges against him whatsoever, so it has to be back taxes.
Well, then, obviously, the village would be responsible for those taxes that he's gonna donate the building to us, so there's something for council to think about also. What is the number exactly?
Twenty-six hundred dollars, as I can tell.
Well, and what's the number exactly, Kathy?
This says second half of thirteen, three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, thirty-one cents are unpaid.
So twenty-six?
No, no, I think that's all, truthfully, the, the other taxes are due, but they're not payable yet.
What's we on, that we will have to pay additionally, we're not paying a tax, we're taxed since.
Yes, yes.
So what's we on, and what it's gonna cost us is whatever's owed there.
And what was it, two hundred?
Three thousand, two oh eight, thirty-one, um, that tax will come to us?
Well, I'm, I was, I'm sure that we will be responsible for it if he's.
Other than school partner.
Signed it over to us, yes, and that, that number is higher than the number I seen, oh, my number I seen was twenty-two.
That's what I thought it was, too.
This is what the actual letter from the attorney, I think, said.
Did we collect the five hundred dollars from him, and he actually paid that, or?
Did we collect the five hundred dollars from him and he actually paid that, or?
If he hasn't paid it, you'll have to pay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, the five hundred maybe made a difference between thirty-two and twenty-six.
Someone probably wouldn't have paid it if he hasn't paid.
Yeah, that's probably the five hundred.
But there are kind of a legend against it other than the five hundred dollars if it's still there. But it was over six thousand dollars.
So, what you're saying is at the time of the closing or whatever, somebody's going to have to come up with that money. Well, when we accept it, I'm sure that we're going to have to pay the taxes.
And at that time, we will have to have an insurance also.
Well, yes, we'd have to have a look at insurance on there, you know, just like everything else in this village is, there'd be insurance cost up there, so, you know. But I still think the positives outweigh the negatives.
Right. I do, too.
Wow, I just don't think anything's going to happen. We're going until it gets in somebody's, in our hands.
In our hands, we'll be in control.
I really don't. It's just going to sit up there cold now and be a nuisance.
Another Jackson.
And, uh, well, and it, and it doesn't just run there, it's an eyesore and it's a nuisance, it's also a safety consideration, the way it is right now.
We could take it and we could benefit from it and we could make this a bargain.
Well, I think the village could benefit from it, yes.
Or we have to put that money in, and we have. Once we decide which direction.
We all go, it needs to have it up there.
Any further discussion? If not, Neil, agree to the Resolution 2014-09, please.
Resolution, uh, twenty-fourteen dash oh nine, resolution to accept the ownership of and title to property held by Sheldon Masking Company and Ohio Corporation. Whereas the above name corporation holds title to property located within the village limits, parcel ID number G two-three-zero-zero-one-four-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-zero-zero. And whereas the legal description of said property is being a part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty, township nine, uh, nine range, one, one east, and beginning on the west line of said quarter, at the northwest corner of Presbyterian Church Lot and southwest corner of said quarter, and seven point seven-seven-six rods north to the southwest corner of said quarter. Then, north, one degree, five minutes west, forty-six point oh four rods with the west line of said quarter, to a T on a stone at the west end of Holly Mills and then for witness by an L on a limestone, south forty-two degrees, ten minutes east, forty-six feet. Then, south, eighty-five degrees, fifty minutes east, thirty-two point three five rods with the center of said approved road, to a seven on a stone, then, south, one degree, five minutes east, fifty point seven-seven rods to an L on a stone on the S line of said quarter. Then, south, eighty-eight degrees, forty-five minutes west, fourteen point six four rods with the south line of said quarter to the northeast corner of said church lot. Then, it's north, uh, fifty-eight degrees, forty-five minutes west, eleven point four four rods with the end line of said church lot to a corner and a branch. Then, it's north, seventy-seven degrees, forty-five minutes west, seven point nine-two rods. Does anybody even know what that's going to be worth?
I don't.
You know, I'm not seeing a turn of the century with the end line of said church lot to the places beginning containing ten acres of land. And whereas the above name Sheldon Masking Company wishes to deem this property as a gift to the village of New Paris, Provo County, Ohio. Said property being free of liens and mortgages, having only taxes and assessments levied by said village of New Paris. Being therefore resolved that the village of New Paris shall accept title and ownership of, to the parcel ID number G two-three-zero-zero-one-four-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-zero-zero, described above, formerly and locally known as Jefferson Township's core property, located within the village's limits of the Sheldon Masking Company.
I got that pretty good.
Man, yeah, it's all pretty, do you know what I'm saying?
I got a question before we move on. Look at my own property that borders that, is there going to be a conflict of interest on my property?
I'd remove yourself. I would remove yourself.
I would do that. I'll abstain from that. Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. Just in case, you know.
Because it is a property owner, it joins up to the property, the ground, that's what you have to do, so.
That's what I'm going to do, a good thought process. Having said that, is there a motion to accept Resolution 2014-09?
Um, we've got motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
I'll stay. Having said that, I would like to do this as an emergency, so we can get down and get Mr. McMahon and get this taken care of. So, I would need to, uh, give the three reading of oral passes of mercy.
I move that we forego three readings and pass this as an emergency resolution.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
What's your name?
Neil.
Yes.
All righty. Uh, Backs the Streets, uh, Billy, as everyone knows, has been doing double duty. Uh, part of the day with the B P A and part of the day with Streets. Uh, he has been taking classes, uh, on, uh, towards, uh, his responsibility is of license needs on the B P A side. Uh, having said that, he has mileage turned in where he's been traveling to go to school. Hamilton, number seven, I think. Anyway, the amount is five hundred and forty-six dollars. That will come out of the street fund. I would need a motion to pay this, please.
I make a motion, we approve payment of mileage for the street, amount of five hundred and forty-six dollars.
Forty-six dollars. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Neil?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question on Billy. After he finishes these schools, has he or is he going to sign the contracts? Maybe that he'll give us his service for so long.
There will be, when I get Brun's nailed down, that was the agreement going into it, that the agreement will be drawn up. That if he up and leaves after we get him qualified, he's going to have to pay us back the amount of time, the amount of money that we have spent.
Right.
Going forward with this. So, his wages at three or however many hours that is, it could be a significant amount of money. So, yes, there will be a contract to somewhat tie his hands. Over if he chooses to re, uh, with reimbursement, I had his hand was the wrong word. He'd have to reimburse, reimburse, yes. Hey, he got excited up there. Uh, I have a thank you card from, uh, Jeb, his wife, and his daughter. Uh, I can have a one for his boss. Also have a card, dear friends, thank you so much for your beautiful banner. It had a wind chime in it, wife got a cheerful addition to our living room. Special thanks to all, this is for my entire family. Um, I made contact with D P N L, back to the generator update. I made contact with D P N L about the pole. You know, we talked in a discussion last month about this generator, the possible hookup. And what they've told us is we can use their pole for a one-time, six hundred dollar, five hundred and ninety-five dollar, being one-time fee, plus a ninety-five dollar inspection of the pole, plus a possible few other minor, uh, uh, money that should be no more than... She, he said not to tie your hands, but it'd be less than nine hundred dollars. I don't know what exactly what we're at there.
Overall, less than nine hundred dollars total?
Yep. Now, that's just the D P N L side. That's a, that's a lifetime uses of the pole, which we're already using.
Right.
And it's already good, or it'd be falling down, but this is the game that we play. But it would be far more expensive to go underground and come overhead if we ever get to the point where we have the generator up. So, I, so like I could not answer, I'd have to get with council, see what council wanted to do on this, whether they want to move forward or not with the pole, so. Comments?
I think it's imperative that we get these generators up, as a safety, safety for the village itself. When the building, people still be able to use that, power stuff comes up, but still, I was still, we've got to get more. You say you want to re-get Wagner, whether Wagner you wanted to send in a bid?
Yeah, I talked to them last week and it, and it's, they still have, come back and give you any more prices, because they weren't aware of what D P N L, uh, opinion was until right now, that I can take that to them, uh, for sure.
So, you know, council could always accept this, so we can move forward with the conditions that we find, find the money to hook the generator up. This is not something we have to pay him, but council knows that this is the cost to us if we go down that route. Uh, I do believe that Chief Dragger is starting his electrical business back up, and so we could probably get a bid from him about this also.
Am I correct, Chief?
You should cheer it up. So, having said that, what's council wish? Do we want to move forward with the possible cost of this or not?
Yeah, I think we need to move forward with it.
Is that a motion?
Are you wanting to?
Yeah, you would want to make this as a motion contingency to the fact that we find the, uh, the, uh, appropriate bid for doing the job.
I make a motion as a contingency upon finding the, uh, appropriate situation to get a generator that we, uh, use the D P N L pole and go overhead, with the cost not to exceed nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Future cost.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Uh... This is a little late. We missed the first meeting here. Notice of public hearing number one, Preble County Five-Year Consolidation Plan Update. Notice is hereby given that Preble County will hold a public hearing on May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at ten thirty A M, Ohio time. I'm sorry we missed this because we changed the meeting, so. Anyway, there's another. In the Preble County Commissioner's Chamber located on the first floor of the Preble County Courthouse in Ohio. Preble County has prepared an update to the five-year consolidation plan to address the county's needs for affordable housing, homelessness, and community development, and strategies to address these needs. A copy of the draft updated to the cons- consolidation plan is available for review at all city and village offices and county libraries. The purpose of the public meeting is to provide citizens with information about the consolidation plan and to encourage citizens' input on the county's needs for affordable housing, homelessness, and community development, and strategies to address those needs. For residents unable to attend the meeting, there is a thirty-day comment period that will run from May twelfth, two thousand fourteen, through June twelfth, two thousand fourteen. During this time, written comments on the consolidation plan may be submitted to the Preble County Commissioner's Office at one oh one East Main Street, Eaton, Ohio, four five three two. All comments received both orally at the hearing and written will be considered in preparation with the final consolidation plan. The second meeting, public hearing will be held June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, at nine A M to discuss the final updates to the five-year consolidation plan before it is adopted by the Preble County and submitted, submitted to HUD. This public meeting is open to all residents of Preble County and any person or organization who desires to speak. On this matter will be affordable, an opportunity to be heard or seen. Individuals requiring special accommodation should contact Commissioner's Office Monday through Friday, eight A M to four P M. These copies are available for anyone that wants to look at them and to anyone that would like to leave that next meeting. Now, is there any discussion as far as Susan's recommendation to us as to the direction council would like to go, uh, with the next round of issue, any, any further comments that anyone wants to go, anyone? If not, we need to be thinking about which ones they really want to do, but it's, well, tell them a bunch real quick, there's going to be some thoughts from us.
Was Cherry Street the only one that we're considering right now, or?
That's the one we have talked about in the past. I mean, the table's open for suggestions, so.
We've got that, that's what we've, we've already started on Main Street, so we could go with that if we wanted to. Or go east on Cherry Street.
Well, east of Cherry Street is what we're starting, what we're talking about, not where it does become west, which is next year. The east, going east is what we're talking about.
Yeah, it'd be nice to go up Main Street all the way up to, uh, Spring, from where we got the law.
It would be nice to go to the city limits up by the water.
Yeah, that leads a path.
So.
Not as bad as East Cherry Street.
Well, that's, East Cherry is what we're talking about.
And they'll be the man again, that one except.
Oh, plan.
Going up to the water.
I was talking about Holly Mills. I was thinking Holly Mills.
You're talking about water, now I thought of water.
Okay, okay. You're right.
We're going to go up to Ralph's house.
He wants speed bumps.
Well, that's exactly, and this would be a good time to wind that up, too.
It slows it down.
Yeah, well, we're off, that's, we discussed this today in a meeting. I think this would be a good time to discuss that also. It's something, the way we need to try to slow it down, kind of, and Ralph's been receiving a lot of complaints about it. So, if we do this project... It'll just go faster. What, what can we do?
That's the point.
We gotta find a way to slow down.
If we repave that, almost going to increase the speech ten more mile an hour, what they're already doing now with the poles on those streets.
You know, it's been brought up that we could possibly put a stop sign there at Lincoln at stop traffic periods, make them stop.
We did that outside.
There are numerous options, whether it be speed bumps, whether there's going to be a radar.
I think you're allowed to speed bumps.
Well, not speed bumps, but...
Bruce, Bruce.
Bruce. I mean, people in the state don't guess what I'm saying?
Like they have before you about purchase stop, flying out of county.
Yeah.
And the same thing that on the shoulder of the highway, on the interstate system, they got a cut.
Yeah.
I don't know, we got to do something, gang, because I'm getting a lot of phone calls, people stopping me on the street. Chief, my, this is what we've discussed in the safety committee. I don't know what the answer is, but that was one of the proposals that I made several months ago, is to do a three-way stop there and see if that would do it, so. I don't know, I guess it's up to everybody to come up with some ideas.
They think about it.
And we're also looking at the project out on twenty forty, or twenty forty.
Forty to seventy.
Yeah.
That's still a Susanism, and we'll have more information from her this Friday when we meet with her. You know, there's still that, we, you know, I, it'd be great if we could figure out a way to do that out here. I think it's just going to be a plus for us for possible development there with the income and, and the jet with the township. Uh, you know, that, that hope is still there, and if we can figure out a way to do it, we can also build that. It's like, like she said, fifty percent going out that way, plus there's some, uh, other grants. And we know there, we know at one, five hundred thousand, that's, that's a real possibility. So, every little penny we could put together in that direction would be great, so, uh, council needs to be thinking about the direction they'd like to try and go, which will be asked most next month, so. Any other possibilities anybody wants to discuss as far as improvements here in the village?
Still got to finish out Holly Mills Road, take that final spurt from, what is that, last re- last year, whatever that is. What is it?
Ridgeview.
Ridgeview to the, back up to the township line. Cause that piece of road is terrible also, absolutely terrible. So, there's another, and we throw out there.
I don't know what we can do, I mean, we just got to make a decision which direction we want to move.
We need to get some tour price estimates, too.
Well, that's, we'll come from her, unless we tell her what we're interested in, I mean, we got to get her...
We give her all these options, but we have to decide on one particular project at this point.
Well, we need to have at least one or two projects. The, the way this works, you get in the pipeline for five years.
Right.
And then about the third year, you're usually surfaced up to that year when you, when the funds come available. And it's based on the scoring of points, you know, just like it always has been in the past. Uh, whether you, you know, if you score high enough, your chances are, uh, are better of us receiving it. It's... Uh, whether you, you know, if you score high enough, your chances are, uh, far better of us receiving it. It's, it's a dependence. But you got to have something in the pipeline and that's why she's asking us to have something in the pipeline. It's the center of all void. It's nothing we'll be happy to. It's not, you know, we have to spend it other than the numbers that she puts together for us. We'll have that expense, but it's nothing that the village is obligated to in any such way. It's just, we're in the pipeline, future.
Funding.
Granted funding. Yes, but we got to have a project in the, in the pipeline. So just be thinking about the direction we'd like to move. Tornado siren. I don't think there's any updates on that either. I'm, I'm going to try and make the next chamber executive board. I did say something to let the raid the other day about this and, uh, so I'll try and make the next chamber, uh, executive board meeting to see if they're having any interest in this. Uh, possibly moving forward with this thing, so.
Council is aware of what I told you about the availability at the party park. There's enough structure down there in the pole and mounting the siren down there.
Uh, you, the discussion was they were off board, but the, I don't remember the whole discussion.
The pole discussion. That we could.
Oh, could, could put one on a pole, yes.
We could use that space.
Right.
To erect a pole and siren.
Right.
And we.
And the generator.
It's a location thing more so than the, and they're willing to come up with as much help as they can monetarily precise, have the space for it too. As soon as we get some numbers together here that I can take to them.
I, uh, I'll make the, the executive with the chamber and then I'll make contact with, uh, CJ now to, uh, at the, uh, natural springs. Cause he has, has expressed some interest in, uh, possibly helping also. So I'll make those contacts. And, uh, may, uh, see what kind of, uh, obligation we can get from when we may, I'll just call. If we have to have a meeting or whatever, because we do have to get this thing rolling if we're going to do it. I don't remember the topic right now.
I thought you had it in August.
Yeah, August. I think it is August. And there again, it's a fifty-fifty thing. If you spend twenty, they pay ten, so.
Do they not have a cap of twelve? Something where I.
Ten.
I think twelve thousand.
I think there was a cap of ten.
They would pay ten.
There's a cap of ten. Cap of ten.
They would.
Yeah.
Okay. That they would cap.
If you did fifteen, they'd do seventy-five hundred. There's a cap of ten. And the numbers are not in front of you, but I think the numbers on two was twenty-two, twenty-three thousand. So one should be.
Cause I thought that's what we was talking about, was just doing one time twelve thousand. I thought that's what the number was.
Yeah, I am twelve to some point.
Well, we talked about the number, but then we start talking about the other dandy, maybe jump, jumping in there. We may end up with two.
Yeah.
Two, you know, if we get contributions. I mean, if, if we get two for around the twenty-two, we'll, we'll be liable for twelve. Just depends on how much we gather from everybody to put in the bag.
And that's why they probably need to move forward with the generator here so that we can have the same availability. Cause you're going to have to have a generator system to use it properly instead of a, you know.
They recommend, they recommend, they recommends generator, cause the batteries are five hundred dollars a piece and they don't last very long. Couple, three years, you buy new batteries. So they recommend putting it in a situation where you have all, all, all for the current, in case you store stock everything.
Generator here serves more than just one purpose.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, the next meeting will be June. Am I forgetting anything? Are you still awake? Alright, next meeting will be June second, two thousand fourteen at seven A.M. I need a motion to adjourn.
Did you have something to say about the last renewal or just that you're renewed?
Oh, uh, I, thank you. I want to express our gratitude to the citizens, uh, citizens of the village for passing the levy. It's, uh, it's, it's absolutely a wonderful thing that they helped us out with this. And hopefully, uh, with the, uh, income, I hope this is the last thing that we have to do.
I could have thanked your community members.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't have the new prayers needed anymore to get our thanks out to them, so, yes. Okay, with that, I would need a motion to adjourn, please.
One more thing, if everybody hasn't already seen it, we have a new ice cream parlor in town. They reward treats. That's, uh, got very good ice cream and I would, uh, thank everybody to go down and, uh, get a little bit of ice cream.
Is it really good?
Yes, it is.
I like socks, everyone.
I do too, it's good.
Come down to Carlotti after the meeting and I'll buy your first one down there.
There you go.
I agree.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a gift. I appreciate talking to you. Without a new motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Is there a second?
I'm heading.
All papers.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.